We're gonna call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Uh, Mark?
Here.
Gary.
Yes.
Tim.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, public forum persons asking to speak to the board reasonable amount of time not to exceed five minutes. Uh, Katie Warnick? John Kroll?
Yeah, I, my, our village looking at state and federal grants to get some of these buildings on Main Street here picked up and running it, but the small business in them, you know? You look at how many empty buildings we got, the old Berman building, the Union State Bank, Angelo's, you know, the fire department. If nobody's been taking care of them, what's gonna happen to them? Russ gonna keep in, you know? There's gotta be money out there somewhere to get some business in here to open them up, you know? And that, uh, they said, I, you take that Gil Angelo building, it's been closed what for fifteen, twenty years? You know, if anybody, you know, maintaining that building, it's all that rust, you know? And then if we have a fire in one of those buildings, we're gonna have one heck of a problem, you know? And that, I got actually three things wanna talk about is, the village used to award prizes for the first three places for Christmas decorations in town. Whatever happened to that, you know? Why don't we go back to that? You don't have to get out a fortune to make a hundred dollars for first, seventy-five for second, fifty for third. I think we can afford two hundred bucks for that. You know, and my third one is, Granite is the only community in this area that doesn't decorate the light pools in town, you know, for like Halloween, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, or whatever. Is there an ordinance against that in this town, you know?
We had talked about doing that earlier in the year.
Yeah, but didn't somebody say something that?
Well, I, I was at a board meeting a couple of years ago when they said it was illegal. Well, if it's illegal, why does Watoma, Nashco, Berl, and Amro, everybody around us do it? You know?
I think it has something to do with our ordinance. Isn't there a way to take that out of the ordinance where it's said signs unless it's posted by the village and the police department? Allow now?
Yeah, I think.
So we did change the ordinance on that.
So what does it say?
Oh. Wonder if I have it in my car.
You know, it's, I mean.
There's some books over there.
Yeah, here with me, I got it rewritten in my car.
Yeah, we can't really discuss it anyways, so.
Yeah, anyway, what I'm saying is, you know, you can't impede foot traffic on the sidewalks. You put that stuff in such a place that it ain't gonna, you know, impede anybody walking down the sidewalk. But you go to Watoma, and I, like I said, everywhere, and them, uh, holes are all decorated. It makes that town look a lot better, you know? And then I would like to encourage our businesses to decorate more often too, you know? The only two that are really decorated are tablets here, Irish Pub and Post Office Bar. That looks really good at night when you drive through here. You know, that's all I gotta say, but.
Alright, thanks, John. Uh, I guess that ends the public forum, so. Uh, approval of minutes, regular board meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, reports clerk, forthcoming events and correspondence.
I don't have anything.
President, forthcoming events and correspondence. I don't have anything at this moment. Alright, so moving on to finance, personal, insurance, uh, Dylan.
So we got checks, one four six seven three through one four seven two two in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine fifty-two thirty-four. Under the general fund, we got checks sixty-two oh five eighty, five eight thirty through sixty-two oh five eight forty-seven for water fund on the amount of five thousand one eighty-two eighty-one. For sewer, we have checks six three zero six six zero three through six three zero six six two one in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-six sixty-seven. We have checks one ninety-three through three forty-seven and two ten through three fifty in amounts in, in the amounts of twenty-one, three ninety-two, twenty-seven, and nineteen thousand zero six zero eight-five. And a grand total of one hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and nine ninety-four.
Alright, approval of bills listed for payment and financial reports, uh.
Motion to approve the bills listed for payment and financial reports.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consider act on resignation letter from Kathy Johnson, Police Department.
We just have to approve it right there.
Yeah.
Is that something you gotta look at backfilling?
What's that?
Is that something you have to look at backfilling?
Uh, she, I guess she was gonna like fill in if need be and.
Yeah, so, uh, she said if we really get into a bind, she would step in and help us, um, but as of right now, she wants to retire. She said we can call her for, for help if we need it, but, um, I don't see why we would necessarily need her, um, I mean, not that, not that we don't need her, she was great, but.
Weren't you guys looking into doing some of that voice recording stuff and all that, which would help out with it?
Yep, so with the vacation software that we're looking at, um, we won't necessarily need a bunch of, you know, secondary receipts or stuff.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. So, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, scheduled date of caucus.
You skipped Alex, number three.
Oh, did I? Oh, I'm sorry. Discuss, consider act of Eller and Associates Financial Proposal.
So we are pretty much approved of that, so just motion to approve.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, back to scheduled date of caucus.
I think it should be a Saturday afternoon. Caucus.
I'm new to this.
Caucus is when you nominate your people to.
It's when you nominate people for, uh, the positions that are available. There's some positions that are coming available, are up for reelection on, and we have to put the notice in the, uh, paper by tomorrow and then, um.
So I went back and looked and the caucus was fifteen minutes prior to.
The board meeting.
Board meeting. Next board meeting, so that would be January fifteenth.
Yep.
It's our next one, so six fifteen was the caucus, six thirty was the actual start of the meeting.
So, does anybody have any recommendations, recommendations or suggestions, anything that they would like to change about that, the way that we did it last time?
I'd like to see it go back to the Saturday afternoon like we used to do it. Because then we got more people from town here and they weren't working 'cause they were off for the weekend. And maybe we'll get more people that'll be interested in running.
So on the last one, this room is pretty full though. Like, I like your idea. But I don't know if we just wanna stick to the same, 'cause I, 'cause I was here for it last year and it was pretty full in here, and we were out of chairs.
Yep, I think we leave it for before the meeting.
For at least this one, and then discuss further down the road, maybe? Cause we are, yeah, we're only, what, two weeks, three weeks away from that, so I think if we make a change now, is that gonna hinder?
I don't see, as long as it's published, we wouldn't have a problem.
You said that's January fifteenth?
Yeah.
How long does that have to be published for?
What was the time?
It just has to be, uh, there was a, um.
You told me, I don't remember.
It has to be in the paper by the, by the thirty-first of December, in order to have it on the fifteenth.
Uh, I motion to schedule the date of caucus from January fifteenth at six fifteen.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, sewer and water, Mark?
Uh, monthly update, Brent.
Alright, we got Stephen went to WRWA in Culver for two classes in the end of November. One class was basic general wastewater and the other one was for sanitary sewer collection. And we'll just keep signing them up for the classes and he's doing a great job at catching up fast. Uh, we cleaned the sewer line section of Lang um, from Fenella out to Bean Street. There are no issues ever coming up good there. We had to read the meters for their quarterly, uh, meter read and trained Stephen on how to hook up the laptop to the truck and put the antenna on the truck and drive around and get the mobile reads for the two hundred some that are still mobile. We got a little under half cellular. And then Paul, Paulus came and backed out the lift stations. They got all seven of them done in under a day's time. We applied for a grant for focus on energy because we got that well two E F E project done. And Matt Rettler was actually the one who got us the contact information to get that grant, so gotta thank him. And that's it for updates.
So Stephen's going pretty good then? Catching up?
Yeah, yeah, really good.
Perfect.
Willing to go to the classes and you just gotta keep, keep them exposed and keep them going to the classes so it can start taking some tests and we'll have them take the tests over at PSI like I did and in, uh, at the university in Oshkosh there, in the testing center. Gotta get them a couple of classes so they can get the exposure.
That's good to hear. Do you have an idea when the updated meters are all gonna be done, being installed?
Well, we're due with our cross connection inspection contract that was signed with the D N R. We have to do thirty-eight meters, or thirty-eight cross connections a year. So to get that in within ten years, we'll be doing thirty-eight of only so ten percent.
Like five years or so?
Five years probably.
Alright, so item number two, consider act on sewer charge reduction policy.
In the email I sent you, there's a draft of that sewer reduction policy. Everybody have a chance to read it over or it's just stating that, like we talked about, uh, averages for a year on their water bill, we just average out those three quarters that weren't high and then have that be the their average usage, they have to pay for that sewer charge, but then anything over that will forgive just for the sewer side of the bill.
So you would have like a calculation and then they wouldn't have to come into the board? They would be not, potentially notified by you from?
Yep, if they have a issue with what their bill, then they would contact village hall and then they'd contact us and I would look at the meter and see what their average usage is and then Glenn has in here, if it was, if it's gone down the sewer, you would only forgive forty percent of that extra. So if it was, if they say it was a garden hose or leaking outside, then that would just be the average for the year.
I like it. I think a lot of thought went into it. I think it's some kind of relief rather than just telling everybody no.
Isn't there some sort of a meter that we've talked about before that could, people could have for outside water only?
Yeah, that, well, Berl has, I've heard they have a deduct meter. But then that's also having it, um, a plumber.
That's for water, garden stuff?
In the house. And then you have to, that's another endpoint that you have to have hooked up so then you can get that meter read and then deduct it off the bill, so then there's more cost in getting extra meters to the houses when this, I have two graphs here that I could show you what I seen and how I averaged out the other two and I'd just go on the computer and you can see how much more the usage is and then just average up their normal years.
That's cheap, it's ultimately, so nobody has to go and buy that extra meter, this is just to take the average and.
Well, and this is basically just for if somebody leaves their hose on, like the Ben Ock situation, left his hose on all weekend and this here is now a policy that we can use instead of us having to have them come in and do all this kinda stuff. We have a policy in place. If this is what happened, bam, it's done and over with. But now for the whole garden thing, if they wanna reduce their water bill for gardening, but Granite does have the possibility of putting in a sand point and doing your own pump for pumping water for your garden, so.
As long as it's shallower than ten feet.
And it also has to be inspected and certified, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So as long as they get it certified and all that stuff by the D N R, they can water their garden with it as long as it ain't connected to the house or any of that kinda stuff. But this just helps out with the situations where somebody accidentally leaves their hose on and we don't have to sit here and try and play a guessing game. It's just done.
So basically, based on this, if we, if we do this, it doesn't say that you can't do that in the future, install that type of meter or?
No, no, this is just getting us a policy now for.
So I'll motion to act on item number three um, for under sewer and water for the proposed sewer charge reduction policy memo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Consider act on sewer charge reduction of four oh three Foster Road.
Uh, four twenty-one East Bannerman first, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consider act on reduction for four twenty-one East Bannerman Avenue.
Yeah, Bannerman. But what about the other people that came in and we said no to?
Uh, we said no to the water.
Yeah, we said no to water and gardens. We didn't say no to this. This was the one that we held out to get this put in place.
With this new policy in place, would we have to consider an act on this or would we just calculate?
Yeah, basically these two would fall underneath this new policy now, correct?
Yep.
So they, they, we'll get relief and, okay. So then we really don't have to consider or act on these, it's just gonna go underneath the new policy, correct?
Yeah.
Alright.
So item number five, consider act on quote from Ferguson Water Works for one thousand seven oh five thirty-four.
Yes, so the quote and invoice from, well, that, this quote and invoice, uh, four and, or the four and five, or five and six, five and six. Those are for the replacement project for the canal and Foster Road valve, that would be the water main valve. The invoice is for the labor and the gravel and the equipment to come and dig it all up. And then the quote is from Ferguson for parts. What we do is contact Berl and Berl has the room and the inventory that us, or we don't have a spot to keep that kinda inventory for six inch valves, eight inch valves, tubes of ductile, ductile iron, all the stuff that, they have pallet racks for. And Ryan's nice enough that when I call him, he's willing to let me come get the stuff and then just give the invoices and pay them back, so they're more than willing to help out, which is very nice to have in neighboring community like that.
Yeah. So, motion to approve both invoices for both five and six?
Uh, second.
Did you have a question, Tim?
No, I was gonna see if we're gonna do it separate or not.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve, uh, quote for Ferguson Water Works.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve Egert excavating invoice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then we got the M S A, um, commercial cross connection inspection. So what happened here was Chris from Kunko, our cross connection inspector who has the whole list of all our commercial business in town and has all the dates for when they come up, or in the years that they have to come up. He ended up leaving Kunko and going to M S A. So it makes more sense to just keep with Chris who knows our commercial, um, commercial customers and has already been in contact with them on the inspections and knows what to look for. It just would save time and money for us to just stop with Kunko and just get M S A on that pre-approved contractor. Every year there's commercial cross connection inspections that have to be done.
Would they still be on there, Kunko? Would they still be on the pre-approved list?
And he's handling our commercial, industrial, and multifamily dwellings, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to act on item number seven to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Our review act, consider act on, uh, twenty twenty-four service agreement with Glenn. This is just, uh, this, this already happens, right?
This is the new agreement that he has proposed to the board, um, cause his, uh, con, current contract comes up here at the end of the year.
Is there any major changes on this that were different than the last one?
No, it's all pretty much the same.
So on this one, it says review and update ordinances?
Um, yeah, he's been helping out with, uh, some of the ordinance questions.
So as the goal, that's just kinda is, one of his goals is to help in that?
Yeah, if we have questions, we can, you know, ask about any of this kinda stuff. Um, this is all stuff that he's already been doing and if I can say Glenn has done a lot for this village and helped us get through a lot of problems. Um, and, uh, he is, um, a lot of his time he doesn't even account for. He, he does a lot of this stuff at home at nights on his own time just to help out and try and save us money. So it's, I think he's been a great help to the community and I would really like to see him continue helping out.
And he was a big help on the finance portion too.
Yeah.
Like having that historical knowledge and, yeah.
Well, he's been working with so many other, you know, bigger cities and stuff and been through so many situations that the knowledge alone that he has in the head of his is just amazing.
Yeah.
So, uh, I just, I would really like to see this approved and moved forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Yeah, we.
Yeah, didn't have.
Alright. Uh, machinery, garbage, and ordinance, Gary. Uh, we got one last one.
Consider act on win nine one one, a free quote on existing Scotta computer, you want four thousand nine hundred and ninety?
So that win nine one one software that we currently have, we have the free version, but our P J Cornton, who does our SCADA computer upgrades, they, and all our SCADA work, informed us that win nine one one coming at the first of the year is going to be moving to a subscription-based, so then every year it'll be a thousand dollars or something like that. But he said if you could purchase the software now, then you'd be able to push that subscription always before they have to redo that software.
But this is something that help, that's needed, right?
Yeah, it, it's for our alarms that it calls the on-call phone. So all alarms go to the computer and then it sends a signal out to our on-call phone to call us and get us in, in an emergency.
Oh, perfect. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye for opposed to the other one? Okay. Alright, so then we're okay to go with machinery, garbage, and ordinances, Gary?
Yep, uh, monthly, monthly update. Hey, what's going on? Okay, there's no update.
No news is good news, right?
Uh, number two, consider act on approval of three dogs for Thomas Dahl.
So I don't know if anybody's driven by and seeing him out there training his dogs. This guy's very thorough with these dogs. I, I have no doubt in my mind that he is doing a good job and won't be able to handle, that he will be able to handle all these three dogs.
Motion to approve item number two on machinery, machinery, garbage, and ordinances.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Number three, consider act on approval of purchases for fifty-four inch John Deere snow blade from Dalweig Implants in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Is there some kinda discount on that? It's pretty cheap for a snow blade.
For, for the garden tractor?
Yeah, and that's still kind of old?
Hmm, I don't know, I thought it was kinda high. Cause I really tried to find one other than John Deere, but you couldn't, that, that would fit on there. We've been having so much problems since I've been here, cause as everybody knows, we get more heavy wet snow than we get anything else. And, uh, we cannot, that mower, even after we built it with new impeller and, and the hose tolerances on, as soon as it gets any heavy wet stuff, it'll plug. And last year, he asked me, he couldn't get it to work and I just told him, shut it off and just, we gotta get the sidewalks open up, we just push through it with a mower. And of course, we bent the auger, which we fixed, it's not a big deal, we can bend it back straight. And of course, uh, you see where the sidewalks, where they meet the intersections, how, you know, when I plow the intersections, I ridge everything up and there's just no way of cleaning it. So, um, like they have that, that blade for, for that type of snow. And when we have good powder snow, or decent snow, then we can, it takes us two minutes to shift back to the mower. So it would be very beneficial to Public Works if we had, we could do a lot better job in these heavy wet storms.
Make a motion to, uh, purchase the blade?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, number four, discuss, consider act on approval of John Lust Kunkel Engineering Group for zoning and building inspector consultant.
Okay, so, just so everybody is aware, there was something that happened to John over the weekend and he was not able to be here for this meeting, um. Basically, this has all been pre-approved, um, uh, there's been money set aside for this to be done and as far as like building permits, all that stuff, when people pay for the building permits, they're the ones that are gonna be paying for the inspector's time. The only thing that we're gonna have to pay for if we need him is things such like the house down here where we had to have an inspection done and things like that. So, he would, would have liked to have been here tonight, but unfortunately, I'm assuming it must have been something health-wise um, that, uh, he wasn't able to and, and nobody else was able to be here because of timeframe. So, that's why he's not here as of, for tonight.
So he was here during our ordinance meeting? So, he was here during our ordinance meeting and also provided a lot of insight on it, ordinances with his knowledge of working with all the other different communities as well?
Yep.
Did he ever get us any of that information that he was?
Um, they did send us some information, but this is the stuff from Kunkel, not him directly. So, we're still waiting on the stuff from him. So, once we get that, then we can.
And he was doing that at full charge, he was just?
Yeah.
So, are we vague on this, or?
Um, we can still pass it as long as everybody's comfortable with this. Like I said, it's already, all the money and everything's already been situated, that's all taken care of. The only thing that we need to look at is once he gives us his fee schedule and stuff like that, we might have to negotiate, but.
Is this, is this all encompassing in number five as well? Does it need fees?
So, we're gonna have to table number five, cause he was gonna be bringing that to us tonight?
Yeah, that we'll have to table for tonight, or postpone, we'll have to.
Alright, table.
So, number four, I've motioned to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Number five, motion to table for the next meeting?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, number six, discuss, consider act on updating members on the zoning board of appeals list.
So, for updating this, is this on a voluntary basis to be on this board? Or is it just appointed from board members, or how does this work?
Um, in the past, it's been, it wasn't all people on the board, it's been citizens and, um, so on and so forth, but, you know, some of these people have moved, um, and as far as I'm aware, if you're. Yeah, we need, we basically need a whole new board, because if you're on the board of appeals, you can't vote here then. So, like myself and looks like Ellen must have been on here at one time, we're, we're gonna have to basically be off of it now.
Does Sandy still live in the village?
No, she moved.
So, we need four replacements?
Well, like, and Gary, I'm assuming that, well, Gary, you're on here too, so. Is that something you still wanna do, or is that?
No, no.
Okay, so.
We need five.
No, that would be me.
Oh, okay.
So, the only one that's on here that I guess I don't know about is Dan.
And our lead are healthy enough anymore. They used to come to the meetings all the time.
There is some health issues.
So, basically, we need a whole new, um, zoning board. So, then, also, once we get this done.
Till caucus. Table it till next month and then maybe with being caucus, we'll have more people here.
Is that something that we could add into the paper that we're looking for citizens to be on the board of appeal?
Um, I have, I don't know if that's my turn.
Why don't we, why don't we do that? Let's postpone this or table it until, uh, the next, next meeting and if we can, we'll put that on there and then we'll try and get it out there.
Okay. Number seven, consider act on approval of replacing a lawnmower for twenty twenty four.
Apology, you should see discussion and act, not consider, but, um, you remember, it was back in budget time when we kinda discussed that, talked about, um, getting these, uh, mowers out, get out sequence. So, that way we not spending thirty thousand on replacing two of them, I just replace one and then in three, three years, we can replace the other one. And also that we go from residential to upgrade to a commercial unit, so we can get a lot more la- longevity out of it. Um, so, the only reason I'm bringing it up now and not until January is that there, they have, there's, they get seven hundred dollars off in, in January, they have a sale. And, um, I looked on the internet, what used ones like ours are going through for, and I find it hard to believe that, that some of them are getting eight, nine thousand dollars with six, seven hundred dollars on and ours has only got two hundred and fifty hours. So, it's all over the place, I don't know what to expect out of that. Uh, I would put this one up for sale that first of April and, uh, we'll have to see if we can get out of it. If what's old true is what I see, we should be able to get eight thousand for that mower. And as far as for the money for it, um, that piece of equipment gets used in the cemetery, it gets used in the parks, it gets used in the streets. Um, I just propose that if, if you think this is a good idea to replace this mower, um, I think we should take the money out of all of them. Not just like last time they took it out of the GTA money, the state aid money, cause it did the streets. It does, we should take it out of the streets, parks, and cemetery and we have some money in, uh, in our, uh, equipment farm. I think we, that could help absorb the cost of that machine by taking it out of these other, uh, places.
So, you're talking now, before the new budget takes effect?
I'm talking about when the new budget takes effect. We're just, I just wanna see if, if this is something that you were, you're willing to do, it's up to you.
We already just, we discussed that you were gonna replace one in the budget.
We discussed it at budget time, correct. We discussed it at budget time.
And if we can get it cheaper now?
No, yeah, he came back and he told me it's, it'll be a sale, uh, second week of January. And so, I couldn't wait till next, the next meeting to ask you to, if, uh, there's something you wanna go forward on. Um, he doesn't need his mon- he doesn't need the money until we take delivery, and I won't take delivery until April.
Well, they're always cheaper this time of year anyway, so.
You know, what would the cost?
Thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
We could maybe get like six, five, six thousand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping. I, I don't know, I mean, from what I see on the internet, it's like, that's what they have it for sale for? Does it mean that's what they're gonna get? And this is dealers that have them.
We budgeted that mon- money for that mower too, so.
So, we can.
More, yes.
I guess, is that something you wanna do if you, if you want me to get that mower? Is that what you wanna do is maybe absorb the cost and all these other?
Where it's used?
Where it's used, or like, like I think, Glenn, it wasn't the last time that it was taking all the GTA money, wasn't it? So, which it would, the streets and then also park cemetery. And there's always money left over in them, you know, so it wouldn't be a big lot coming out of one area. We'll just be distributed throughout.
I think it makes sense, I mean.
Hope white people place in the summer.
Well, yeah, and I'm, I'm totally agreeing, but I guess what I'm saying is, is I agree with what he's saying is that, you know, all these different departments should absorb at least some of that cost and not just one. Seems how everybody's getting benefit out of it, so.
So, basically, you're saying that it's thirteen thousand, you're thinking?
He told me the exact price would be thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, what fourteen thousand six? At the time we were talking about it in budget. And he called me last week and said, you're interested, it's six hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars off, or six, something like that.
Is it something that maybe we should talk to him about? Would they do trading on the other one, or?
It'll be over.
Well, that's why I'm asking, some places do, some places don't.
Facebook, or we can go on Wisconsin's surplus.
Okay.
And it only has two hundred and fifty hours on, so, and this is the smaller one.
Is that something we can add to this, uh, consider act on and sell the old one and replacing the new for fourteen thousand?
So, I would s- say motion to approve purchasing of the lawnmower.
Well, we would have to basically say that, yes, we can do this, but then we'd have to put it on to the next meeting to actually act on it, I'm, I'm thinking is what we'd have to do here. So, we can give him the permission to move forward with the deal, but we'll have to do it on the next meeting that we can approve it. Okay? So, I, I say let's go for it, let's see where we can get the best bang for our bucks and. Anybody else got anything else to say?
It's commercial, it's twice, twice the machine that we're trading in.
Yeah. So, we're getting on the okay to get done?
So, yeah, motion to approve, giving him the okay to move forward with that, uh, table it for the next, for the funding and the final approval.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Alright, Parks Cemetery, Ellen. Any updates?
Nothing.
Alright, uh, police.
I have a monthly update. It's, uh, we got all the lights out. Had it come in yesterday because the license didn't work, but we got it going again.
Did you figure out who was driving around in the park again?
Oh, yeah.
Which part?
We got, we got Regan's top-notch cop on it.
And he's local, the guy that did it is local.
And you can give the credit for that seven hundred dollars we spent on that license plate reader, otherwise he would never got him.
And Willa Creek again?
Yeah, we went about, uh, he was about four or five hours before we went out and closed the park. We had that fresh snow and here he comes. And we, there's no way without that license plate reader, because when a car is moving, it just, it's just white, you can't see it, so. Because of that, we got him.
Are you able to dime him out right now, or no?
Uh-huh.
Are you able to dime him out right now, or is that confidential?
That means reveal them off.
As far as what?
Where's he from?
I mean, I don't know if I can say that in the meeting, but, yeah, he's from, he's from Regan, he's actually from right down the road.
What's that?
Is he over eighteen?
What'd you say?
Yeah.
I'll call it.
Then you can.
The last name's in the queue, so I'll just have to say that, I mean, you know, I'm sure many people probably, you know.
Alright.
And the parks, it is closed, we have, uh, road closed down there with the logs across. Next year, we'll have something a little cancer than the lawns, so if they just happen to be there handy to keep people out of the new seating, this law, so.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Somebody's gonna get hung up on.
Jump right over the top of that damn log and.
And get caught.
You can't, you can't stop everybody.
Oh, I understand that, but.
The whole league goes by the license plate reader.
Do we have some kinda measure to maybe make those barriers bigger?
We'll come up with something next year, I don't, I'm not sure.
I have a ton of scrap aluminum that's thirty feet long sitting outside.
Alright. Any, any other updates for Parks and Cemetery? Alright, moving on, police and fire, Tim?
Well, nothing, no, just looking for some money, that's all for a fire truck. Um, can I say something? Sure. Um, it's more so for the fire department, is that okay? Yeah. Um, the fire department just implemented a new, um, kinda like policy or is starting a new committee for, um, health and safety standards for the department members. Um, to which I volunteered to be the head of that, uh, which is totally new to me. So, if anybody has any suggestions or any, um, resources and knowledge on that topic of health and safety in the fire department, um, let me know. But I just wanna be totally transparent with you guys as to, you know, us starting a new committee over there regarding health and safety, so.
So, the employees have to meet certain standards?
I don't think that that is necessarily what it is, um, it's not like we're gonna go and make the firefighters do like fitness tests or, or obstacle courses or anything. I think it's more so from what I'm reading from these statutes, is more so, um, the hazardous material, um, more so making sure that they're washing their gear, making sure that they're, you know, their stuff is clean, that they're wearing air packs going into a fire. Um, that's what I'm getting out of the state statutes, um, as far as that right now. But like I said, this is totally new to me, I just wanna be transparent with you guys that we are starting a committee like that.
So, it's basically just protecting our fire department personnel?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, thanks for stepping up.
Absolutely.
Alright, uh, streets, sidewalks, ditches, Mark?
Monthly updates. Okay, um, Gene and Adam. Gene and Adam, we have been working on the warming shed that's been inside the shop, I think Mark's seen it, um, for the ice rink. Insulation wiring and the cover holes for the ice gates, uh, for the ice gates are being completed along with the trim work. It should be finished by the end of the week. Um, Willow Park has been closed to vehicle traffic like we talked about and of course, we talked about, uh, the license plate reader that caught the guy that was in there just before we closed it, so. Um, western park were completed and also ice rink frame was put up and, uh, waiting for cold weather, we gotta have weather that doesn't get above thirty-five and stay down in the low twenties, the teens to make it work. And if we don't have it, we won't be able to fill up until, um.
I think we're gonna get that tonight.
Huh?
I think we're gonna get that tonight.
What about Christmas when it's forty-four and ready?
Maybe January.
I think last year was the middle of January when we wanted to build it. So, we'll see, we're, we're trying, we see through all, we try, right? So, um, all equipment is ready for snow plowing operation. Millet Chal had a heat, heat, uh, a heat zone that went out on that, the furnaces, uh, put heat and they are thermostat's in each room and it, and it puts heat in, that heat in each room and one of them, uh, went out. As long as, as long as did that humidifier on one of the furnaces, so we had to have that replaced. All brush and leak pickup is completed until spring. Um, LED high-density lights were installed on the John Deere tractor that Gene drives with a bucket on it for better visibility at night when he's, when he's plowing. So, we put in all LED lights on it, so I know if you look at it, you see spots for about a half an hour afterwards. Work pretty good. And then on the, on the, uh, the John Deere that we talked about with the blade, I put a, a high-density, uh, strobe light on that, cause it just had a little blinky thing on it before, so. I want everybody to be visible so they can see him, so especially if somebody gets hit, there's no excuses why they didn't see him. Um, and Tim, I got your snow guards.
Thank you.
We got them all installed, so we should be all good.
It might snow this year.
I was waiting for you to say something, but I didn't get a jump on you. So, that, that's, uh, that's all I have for, um, an update, anybody have any questions?
Consider act on LREP funded road project.
Um, I'm sorry. Uh, so, we have received that LREP funded road project money two years ago, I believe it was. We're twelve five and we have to mash it, so that's twenty-five thousand dollars. So, with the, uh, road tax money and what I got for the, uh, G, GTA money, um, I decided to get, want to get that taken care of this year, because we have that other twenty-seven thousand that's out there that we'll have to deal with, probably not next year, but the year after. Um, so, I came with two roads, um, two roads that I think were gonna be close on. One is Townline Road that's on, uh, um, on the end of Warren and then, uh, the other one is Bridge Lane and that's off of Pine River Street. Um, northeast asphalt is out today to do an estimate. We have to submit this by January fourteenth, this project and what road we're gonna do. Um, I, I wanted to talk to you about it, I, I mean, to be exactly twenty-five thousand is pretty tough. So, I capped it at thirty thousand, is that something that you would all agree on? That we do not go over that thirty thou- if it's like twenty-eight, five, you need that five thousand, because you can't be exact when you're pulverizing and redoing road. So, is everybody okay with capping it at thirty thousand for the, for this project? Um, so, she's gonna get back to me and the one, uh. Is it Town, I didn't Townline, no, I can't use it, Townline? Yeah, Townline, I don't even, I don't know the streets for Christ's sake. Um.
Tell you a second.
Townline, there you go, I know it was in Townline. Um, that one is gonna, I'm kinda leaning towards Bridge Lane, cause I always like to put culverts in the year before we do the road and that one has two culverts and some minor ditching that has to be done before that. But I'm thinking that road's gonna come in, uh, at thirty or a little bit above. So, it's probably gonna be more likely, uh, Bridge Lane and then if, if that comes way under, we can do a little, there's other little sections that we can do to make up to that thirty thousand. So, I guess I'm asking approval, um, asking approval for, for one of them two roads. I, I'm not sure until that estimate comes back, what it's gonna be, but I'm quite sure it's gonna be Bridge Lane, it's gonna get done. And Frymark said, uh, the commissioner said he's gonna help us, cause it's gotta get into the paper for two weeks for bids and all this other stuff, so he's gonna help us get through that process. But it has to be in by January fourteenth, what road we're gonna do.
Motion to act on item number two with a limit of thirty thousand for whichever road is appropriate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number three was already approved, that, uh, got stuck in here by mistake.
Well, I'm in, and family equipment sales, I didn't buy any equipment, that's Dave Papa on, uh, twenty-one. Um, I don't, he's making a really good deal from him for, uh, for, uh, limestone and for, uh, recycled blacktop. So, if you didn't approve it, you'd have to dig up all that recycled blacktop that's on that green, right in front of Jim's house, little start. So, that, it shouldn't have been in there, so it's my fault, so.
Alright, so then, uh, moving on to library, monthly update, Jeanie?
Um, we're gonna be closed Monday, the twenty-fifth, and January first. We tend to be busy over the holidays and break because kids from school that are. We tend to be busy over the holidays and break, because kids from school that are off come in. We had a hundred and fifty-nine people for the cookie walk, that was really good, we ran out of baked goods, but we had some leftover cookies. Um, we helped, the library helped with, uh, some of the promotion and everything with the Breakfast with Santa at the Civic Center for their fundraiser. Thank you, Mark, for coming and being there. Um, it, they need new flooring throughout that building, and the first estimate is about seventy-five hundred dollars. So, they're a long way from that goal, so we're hoping that we can get some word out to get some more funding. That is one of the most historical existing buildings in the village. It was the, you know, I think, the hall, this, the village hallway back in the day, somewhere along that. It was the library and, you know, now Civic Center, so, we wanna keep that if we can. Um, our one o'clock annual meeting will be next month, and that's where we'll get elected to board positions, where I served on a couple. Um, we're working on the story walk, and the story walk that we have chosen to do with Lucille Clark funds that we had earned and saved from the community market that we did not spend, we're gonna try and do that throughout Red Granite. And our first target with the board's approval, um, would be around the quarry. And we talked about that at the quarry meeting last weekend, and everyone on the committee at that, that met, the three of us that were there, think it's a good idea. But, there's other places in the village we can do that, and in Moraville, and places that we'll be targeting in the future. So, with that, uh, my library board and the friends, uh, have committed about twenty-five hundred dollars for materials to do the story walk. It is a copyrighted thing to do it properly, but it would provide benches and flowers and dress up some of the existing, uh, places that we have out there. It would be on things to get other people from other communities into our area, it'd be family oriented. So, um, that's where we're gonna be. So, at some point, maybe on your next meeting, you can approve that, so I can move forward, because we have to order materials and basically build the structures. There are little things, I can send you visuals about it, it's a very, very popular thing going on with libraries, to get out in nature, exercise, and engage in reading. So, um, other libraries in our communities do this, so we should as well. Um, in addition to that, I would like to have you guys put on the agenda for approval for next meeting, if, or soon, to again, do the community market on Saturdays outside. It was very, very successful, we turned our slowest day around to our busiest day. Um, it's a huge revenue source, our vendors were very happy, we need more vendors, we need more word of mouth. But, we really set a good foundation, and we wanna continue it on, and I could hope that you would like that to see that happen. Um, in light with that, our library board is going to extend our Saturday hours to two PM with additional funding, we can do that. So, that would also, on Saturday, help the vendors be there at a longer period of time, 'cause setup and stuff and being up and down, finding is, is very difficult. Um, and, let's see, uh, the friends, bought, um, some signs, or, I'm sorry, they bought a carpet for the library too, 'cause it's very old carpet, it's been there thirty years. And in the area, the children are stained, so we're gonna get a carpet to cover that. So, that's not gonna be an expense out of the library budget, that's the friends, and those are the book sales money that they're doing. They're also going to go forward with the scholarships for the youth that we employ and volunteer at the library. So, that's something that we talked about last year, we nibbled it around, we're gonna fine tune it, so that'll be available this spring for our employed, uh, students that work for us. And that's all from the friends of the library and book sales, so that's the community helping the community right there. Um, in addition to that, the friends are gonna buy, uh, two books, they're very expensive, of Wonder Books. This is a type of technology I've talked about for a while, but what it does, and at the, the quest of some of the after-school, it's helping bridge that gap of readers, especially affected by COVID, that did not get the learning and the reading ability that they needed. So, this is a very expensive piece of book, but it's a technology that really helps these needs in our communities. So, the friends are committing to two books of that collection every year, or every month. So, that is fascinating and great, and they already put a thousand dollars into it, so that is very nice. In addition, they wanna buy signs for, um, the village, whatever is with ordinance and code. Um, library signs, because this life, community has no signs that says a library is available, and if you go into other communities, they do. In addition, we would like to purchase quarry signs, um, a couple directional signs, because if we're gonna do the story walk, we want people to know where it's going to be. So, they would like to go with the money for that. So, I think I go through you, I don't know.
Uh, for your signs for your library, anything that's on down on twenty-one has to go through the DOT, so I'd have to get a hold of the DOT, and they haven't called me.
Correct, and I know other communities, if you go anywhere, you see them, and I know they have to be placed safe, but there are standards, and whatever that is, just let me know, so I can pass that on.
And for new signs for quarry, on big signs, that's, you gotta replace another one next year, and it's about two hundred bucks. So, I'm just seeing.
Yeah. So, um, so, we're hoping that that is, you know, helping back with, you know, you guys telling people to come to our book sales, and we are being known, as I've told you, as a depository. So, not only do the book sales, again, that's donations, but those donations we're adding to our collection, and that's books that we're not paying for, DVDs that we're not paying for. I very rarely buy DVDs out of our collection, money or out of our book budget. They're from donations, and they are circulating really well, so, um, that's about it.
Okay, thanks, Jean. Alright, so, moving on to miscellaneous business, consider act on approval on application for operator's license effective December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for Autumn Peterson slash Condon Oil Show.
So, moved.
Any?
Can we get it back?
Anything?
I have none.
Okay.
So, motion to approve?
All in favor, well, actually, seconds, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, items to be placed on next regular board meeting agenda, so we got, uh, about the zoning building inspector consultant with the fees, um, we got, uh, updating members for the zoning board, and we should also put on there that we're gonna be looking at doing that, uh, uh, commission for the inspecting stuff too.
And the lawnmower.
And then, uh, consider act on approval of the lawnmower. Um, and Jeanie had the story walk thing?
Mm-hmm.
Starting walk, and then the Saturday.
In community market, yep.
Yep, thank you.
Building stuff.
Um, what was that, Tim?
Also, um, materials building for, uh...
That was, that was the story walk, wasn't it?
Yeah, mainly, it's the pillars that are gonna be coming up, that would be the, the platform, the plaques, that people will be reading on this, and then, we're gonna try and get some benches made too. So, the guy who is making our, uh, free library things that are gonna be put up outside the library, again, this is just for me to put more books out to the community, so I'm not thrown away. They're gonna be doing, he's gonna be doing that out there as well.
See the process.
Any, anything anybody else has? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourning, folks. We're getting better at this. Well, I wanna talk to you about this, Holly, and I wanna see what we're doing. Merry Christmas, folks.
They're never happy.
You outta here? Yeah. Thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Mark.
Mark looks like he's on a mission to get...